Yeah.
And while we're doing that, if if everyone will just check their microphones like normal, just to make sure we can hear you, remember right up. Face on your face. Close to your.
Meanwhile, are there any adjustments or additions?
None from me.
For most. Um. New business or something, I'm listening. The uh. Self Mr. Posner would like to talk about. Possible. Something something effect about. We look at. Outdoor light. It's Patty, can you swear in it?
Yeah.
And. You probably need to make a motion to approve the agenda with that um new business. Okay, so in.
We swearing.
And new business uh preliminary discussion. Lighting ordinance.
Yeah. I need to make that motion.
Outdoor. Light. Ordinance. So. You'd like to make.
I would make a motion. Add that to the.
Okay, all of their. Their set.
Yes.
All those in favor, you can say ah.
Uh huh.
So with that, we have our agenda approved now, we can do the swearing in. Ms. Moreno, yeah, you'll go up. Patty. Speaking to the microphone. Or maybe first of all, the government era. That will endeavor to support. And that will endeavor to support, maintain in the then, maintain and defend the Constitution of this state, the Constitution of this state. The Constitution of the United States, not in from the symbol of the Constitution of the United States, to lend my knowledge and ability to the best of my knowledge and ability. Hi, Christian. Hi. Oh, yes. So execute the ordinance. Without any favor, perfection, section, partiality, partiality, the best of my skill and ability. Hi, welcome. The next item is a dribble of the minutes from last date, everyone's had a chance to look at that. There are no additions or changes here. Sir, second also. Sir, thank you. All those in favor.
Uh huh.
Alright, public comment. Have any public comment. Watching, we certainly appreciate that, that's how we know that. Uh they're representing the town, representing the US citizen, that's what we did. And uh it's always good to have other perspectives. Business. Conditional zoning, so this is a revised text amendment. Um. More conditional zoning, this. Something that. Just make it better every time, so. Looking at for time. Okay, you'd like to.
Thank you. Um so I'll go through. Spree through this quickly, but the full background um for our new member, so this started March of this year when uh council with their visit visioning session basically directed staff to incorporate conditional zoning. Into our town zoning code, so that's when we began the text amendment process. Planning board met twice in the spring, once in April, once in May, where some changes were incorporated into the ordinance. Um and then it was brought to council at a public hearing on June eighth. Um so after discussion, uh the council direction to staff was as follows. Uh to make density. Residential density and minimum lot size requirements, unnegotiable and conditional zoning districts, so that's one thing staff has removed in your uh draft ordinance in the packet. And um I also enumerated that uh minimum lot sizes must adhere to the townwide standard of thirty thousand square feet for detached single family residential developments, twenty thousand square feet for planned residential developments and single family cluster. Developments and those are our. Special provision developments is what it's called, it's in the section of our code where multifamily lies. Um the theory is uh that eventually, once if conditional zoning is incorporated in our code. We will be moving away from special use permits from those items and uh. Have applicants go through the conditional zoning process for multifamily or any of these other special development types. So again, I want to make sure we're reflecting our our base ordinance density and lot size requirements, which is where all this is taken from. Um again, going forward, that uh density cannot be altered altered in the conditional district, so. One dwelling unit per thirty thousand square feet or point six nine acres for a single family detached, but again, our ordinance through the special use permit process currently allows four dwelling units per acre for multifamily, tiny home park, park model parks and RV park developments. And I'm just bringing that forward into the conditional zoning tech, so we're not, we're not um. Negotiating on increased density besides what's allowed currently in our zoning code. And um one thing that council discussed as well, which I think we'll focus on a bit tonight, is the minimum parcel size to even. Qualify for a conditional rezoning, uh to even qualify for the process. When we did this the first time around, I think it was over a year ago. Again, this was gonna apply townwide, so I think we settled on, you know, three acres as the minimum size, but again, we didn't have any geographic limitation on who could do a conditional rezoning or where. Now that we're doing the focus on the future land use map districts where you have to be in one of these districts to conditionally rezone. Um I'm suggesting two acres as a starting point because we're already, you know, shrinking down the properties uh that can apply. Um but again, that's up for our uh board discussion tonight and, you know, happy to take any direction from you all. And that's really the summary I have. I will go through the ordinance, um just because we've made so many changes. Um I highlighted the ones that I made in this recent version. So if you're looking just at the ordinance and attachment A on page five. At the top. Um. There was a section. That based basically talked about uh why conditional zoning would be used, and this talked about encouraging quality urban design. Environmentally sensitive development, et cetera, but by allowing increases in base densities and and again, council said that's not something they want to consider at this time, so that's been scratched out. Um. Further down on that page under one A, uh you can see I changed, again, lot size was completely struck out before because we were just focusing on the future land use map districts, but I've changed that to two acres, again, just as a suggested starting point. And then under the development standards, again, bottom of page five of the uh ordinance text. Three AI or three A one. You can see uh I added the specific density allowances, so again, if someone applies for a multifamily development. Um the idea is is they won't be doing that in the future through a special use permit, they'll be doing that through conditional zoning, but we're still gonna keep the four units an acre, which is what's allowed in our ordinance currently. And so that's what that enumerates that. Uh residential density in the conditional district has to adhere to those town requirements, so again, it's thirty thousand square feet or point six nine acres per detached single family dwelling unit. And then four dwelling units per acre for what I said before, multifamily, tiny home parks, et cetera. Um lot size is a little interesting, there's uh one or two special development types, the cluster developments and the planned residential developments. That allow a twenty thousand square foot lot size and the idea. Is that you would cluster the homes a little closer together on smaller lots in exchange for preserved open space or uh moving away from a wetland area or something like that, so again. Just taking that from our base ordinance standards and putting that in here. And then lastly, in the middle of page six, under section C, you can see that. Under conditional zoning districts may allow for modifications to any or all of the following, we've removed lot size and density from that. And that's about the summary of my changes, so I'm happy to take any questions.
There are minimum on the plan. Sorry. Is there a minimum number of residences on the planned residential development where it can go down to twenty thousand square feet? And the green space or setback from. Is that like a five?
There there's no, there is no unit count minimum, I believe there is an acreage minimum currently in the code. To apply for that, but if that, again, if we were to wrap that into conditional zoning and if we were to set a minimum parcel size of two acres. Again, if that were adopted, that would be the new minimum standard.
And you're thirty thousand into that. Or you're twenty thousand, sorry. So especially, you know, I'm just trying, I was making notes while you were talking, so if you said this part, I'm sorry, the special use permit. For this application would just. Go away.
That's not included in this text amendment, but in some of the discussions with council members, both the one-on-one discussions um and at the council meeting uh. Basically, they'd like to see multifamily developments and some of these other special developments get funneled through this process instead of a special use permit. Correct, if this path, again, if this all goes through, um some of the concerns are that. You know, if there's a townhome development proposed next to you. Uh under quasi judicial rules, you know, you need to have expert testimony, you know, that your property is being harmed in some way, so that would mean a an appraisal, you know, you may need to consult with an attorney, so there. There's a lot of cost and time for um a citizen or a neighboring property owner to to have some type of defense, if you want to call that in the hearing. Whereas conditional zoning, again, it's a legislative decision, just like a regular rezoning, so. Someone could, you know, come say, well, I, I just don't want this, I'm worried about traffic, and that's all they would have to say, um and it would be.
Take a step back from what you said a minute ago, so for special use, so if it's allowed by right, it's allowed. You sign off, special use permit, if I understand correctly. There are criteria they have to meet, but if they meet it. Then it's supposed to be granted.
If they meet the standards in the ordinance, they're legally obligated.
That they're so legally obligated, that's even stronger, so they they've. If they meet that criteria. Removing that and changing it conditional. Allows a lot more.
More leeway.
Yeah, okay.
And it goes through the quasi judicial process. The, you can have witnesses, but the board is not really supposed to consider. Non-expert testimony. But in this case, where it's. It's no longer quasi judicial. Someone can say, well. I I don't have so much of a problem against this, but a little extra buffering, and if we had some more buffering or if they arranged it so that. Uh the buildings did back right up there, whatever, and that could be taken into account. We as a planning board can say, yeah, that's a good idea, or even council can say, that's a good idea, I think that's a reasonable condition. And you can. Go back and forth and agree on that condition.
But but a current situation, I mean, in theory, somebody who owns a property right now that's considering a special use permit application. If they can meet that criteria, there's a legal obligation to grant the permit. That's going away.
And well, not, and that's what I was getting clarified, this ordinance before you does not make that change.
Okay.
But. It's been indicated to staff that that change will be coming.
Okay, I need to word my question differently.
And to prepare for that and. To avoid doing multiple text amendments to conditional zoning, I'm pulling uh those densities out of those, out of the zoning ordinance for those special development types, multifamily. Um because again, we did, I think we talked about four units an acre, and again, council was fine with that only for those develop special development types. But negotiating above that is off the table.
Okay.
So again, I guess I'm incorporating those numbers, just planning for the potential future that if someone does apply for multifamily and if we do direct them through conditional zoning. The the guidance on that is already here.
And I might be remembering it wrong, I just don't remember this conversation last.
No, we didn't, we did not have that conversation.
I try to understand.
It's 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 just been um one-on-one meetings with the town manager, myself and some of the council members and then.
That's coming.
In the hearing.
That that suggestion is coming.
It, it's been indicated it may happen, so we're just trying to plan ahead.
Yes.
Um Hendersonville. Uses conditional zoning for. Certain areas, every, every, say, residential project scored in there has to be conditionally zoned. And that does take away from the special.
Uh Michael, the the two acres you mentioned, is that for, to build any home? That you need, you'd have to have at least two acres, is that what you're saying?
No, it's just to qualify for this process, so if you want to do a conditional rezoning. You have to, well, and again, this is just what staff suggested as a starting point, you have to have two acres, and again, it's. We're already limiting, and I should probably scroll through to some of the graphics, but we're already limiting the geographic scope of this tool by focusing on the future land use map districts. So again, I just threw out two acres because um the the scope of the tool is already being limited, just geographically.
You reduced it some, but then you opened it back up by lowering. From three to two, some backup.
Uh well, three acres, so in the ordinance that council saw, there was no minimum parcel size requirement, so it was just, you had to be in the community center district. Um even if you only had point six acres, you could be in community center and apply for a conditional zoning. But just due to the staff time, I mean, everywhere in town, whether you're in the watershed or out, there were some type of stormwater requirements. Um. Have running through the full process on a property of that size uh may just not be worth it, and again, some of the direction we got from council at the public hearing is. You know, let's let's tighten the gates a little bit at the front and then it, you know, if it's, if it's not open enough of a process for enough people to participate, we can always change that number later.
So for residential.
For no, for any, for conditional zoning could be anything.
Right, but for commercial, there's no minimum lot right now, right?
And again, we're uh so there's two different things, there's there's minimum lot size, which. For a single family dwellings is thirty thousand square feet, and then there's minimum parcel size to even qualify for this process.
And you want to, um the suggestion is apply that two acres to all. Period to the conditional, whether it's commercial they're looking for, because commercial currently doesn't have a minimum lot size, right?
Well, and it's not, and again, it's not minimum lot size, you just have to have two acres of land to do this. That's it.
Right.
Lot lot sizes are gonna be guided by the by the other language in here, thirty thousand square feet for detached single family. Again, four dwelling units an acre for multifamily and then twenty thousand square feet lots for. Cluster developments and planned develop residential developments, but the two acres has nothing to do with minimum lot size, it's just the amount of land you have to have to even do a conditional zoning.
Right, so if you if you've got.
A can a commercially zoned piece of property that you want to build a commercial use on, you don't need this. It's only.
You don't need conditional zoning in commercial? I don't know that I would agree with that.
The the only time you would use conditional zoning is if the use that you want to put on that property is not allowed under the current zoning.
Do you, do you foresee any applications in a commercial zoning? For conditional?
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
I mean, you you're saying see potential commercial conditional zoning applications?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's possible, I think mixed, a mixed use development is the most likely thing, we'll see first.
But I may not be understanding it then, my my thoughts were that conditional zoning was used where. The underlying existing zoning doesn't allow the use that you want. If it's a use by right, you don't need conditional zoning.
That, that's correct, but you may want to vary some other standards.
If you want to vary a standard.
Hold on, we're getting some feedback, let me turn this down. Haven't used, haven't used the system in a month, this is what happens. Um. So sorry, repeat that again. Um.
Been literally second.
Yeah, I know. But I turned a knob.
It.
Hmm.
Because if there's a piece of property. Not zoned will allow what walk. Not necessarily. That it's placed to free zone it. District free zoning, you can do conditional zoning so that only certain land uses can be built there and the future is protected against anything else in the book.
And that's, and that's correct, but that's only one thing you can vary from, so again, in the middle of page six. Uh section C here, it says conditional zoning districts may allow for modification to any or all of the following. Uses, building height, building size, architectural design, parking landscaping, setbacks, open space signage, number of principal uses or buildings.
So so right there, if I can interject, I just heard twenty different things people can apply for.
Well, that's exactly.
Nothing to do with lot size or. Being residential, in residential or a church in a residential, I don't know what other examples you have, but signs, building heights, I mean, those are all. Examples that can be pursued under.
You, yeah, you, let's say you have a use that's allowed by right in general business. But. You're not gonna be able to meet your setbacks and you can't.
There you go.
You can't provide a lot of open space, you could do a conditional rezoning just to vary those two standards only.
So does that make sense, this is another, I might have misunderstood what you were saying, but I I kind of got since you felt this was only applying to residential.
No, I I felt like it could apply to any zoning, it's just that sometimes there's use that someone has. So rather than trying to rezone it, then we look, look. There may be two or three other uses that are absolutely incompatible, but they will become uses by right under that zoning. Conditional zoning allows us to narrow down that rezone only these uses. Now I see where. It's even a tool that. It could be a use by right, but you can't meet certain standards rather than asking for a variance. Goes into conditional zoning, which.
Well, you're, yeah, one thing, I think it's in state law, but it's also in the ordinance, is that this is not meant to be used as a tool to get around the variance, so. Um. If there's a potential hardship. You need to go to before the board of adjustment. Um, yeah. Um, but again, I I do think it's most likely in the the average scenario we see is is use based. Um or or even structure based, so. Again, that's why I say I think most likely what we'll see is maybe a mixed use development, right now, there's nothing in our zoning code that allows commercial and residential on the same. Parcel. So.
Did we not discuss uh? Yeah. Have a parcel. You know, conditional zoning. Apply. That the surrounding property owners have to agree also?
No, so. If the surrounding property owners wanted to be part of the conditional district and part of the conditional rezoning, then yes, they have to agree in writing to be part of that. But if they're just adjacent landowners, they'll get our public notice like a normal rezoning.
They would have the opportunity um and give their opinion.
Just public comment.
Can be taken into account by the board.
But if they don't get noticed, how are they gonna?
We.
Pull this up, give notice.
We give notice. I'm.
It wouldn't have.
They wouldn't have to agree to it, you you.
Agree to it, but we'd still notify.
Yeah, that's state law, yeah.
So I'll be that annoying person for a minute because I'm hung up on the commercial lots, forget conditions for this, just completely forget, what's the minimum lot size for commercial in this?
I'll have to look that up.
Okay, it's it's not thirty.
It's, no, I mean, I.
And it's not two acres.
I'll say some zoning districts have it and some don't. But I'll I'll need a second to confirm that.
Well, just we we do have commercial properties, some higher profile ones that are under two acres, and then the structure is gonna be in my brain, is that, that's where you're gonna see some of these conditional requests, structure.
Hmm.
In commercial.
Yeah.
Under two acres, they can't even apply for a structural conditional zone.
And that's why it's just a starting point up for discussion.
Talking about. Rupture. I see one of the. We have a height. And it's no really high.
Each zoning district is different.
Here we're talking about. May allow for modifications, meaning the following in building height.
Mm hmm.
No, I think basically we held it down to about. Uh. Forty feet. And uh. When it come in here. We're gonna be on a five story.
Doesn't think about conditional, you get to sit around and talk less formally about the benefits and. The negatives about that, and what if they're way down off the road? Topographically below a road and they want to be five feet higher.
Yeah.
First, are you, are we really gonna care if they're fifty feet below the road to begin with? Just as an example, that, now we get to have that conversation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Black. Or if there's no set definition of what the building height is, and I'm sure there is, they don't say it's all on the side of a hill.
The upper and the lower are gonna vary by thirty percent.
So you may have. One face up. But it may not be a side that's facing it. That side of the hill.
I'll say it too, our, our height requirements um are a little all over the place with the different districts, it's forty feet in mixed use, it's thirty-five in general business and it's fifty in all our residential districts.
Okay.
So if you want to build a fifty foot house, you can do it by right today.
Wow. The turret you were talking about the other day, right? Qualifier of two acres to even apply for it across all of them. I'm wondering if, if there should be some discussion about. Lot size to qualify for the application.
My thoughts on that is. Smaller it is, the staff is going to be overwhelmed with.
I agree. We don't want that happening.
This is application.
But what about commercials? What about a gas station that doesn't have to write those?
Yeah.
That wants some sign, you know, I, I don't know what the exact details are. That's not so important. Except we're just shutting off. I'm not saying they shouldn't be shut off, they should.
In the districts where it's allowed. Are there any non-urban projects? Are there, are they all?
In overland or?
Yeah, that's.
Well, they, they're, they're not. Stop and start that align and stop and start. Our, our map is.
I mean, would a smaller parcel size? For commercial, would it be that much more problem?
I think that's a good one, that's probably. I don't want to see a ton of application for residential. I don't think that's a good use. You have two acres that could benefit. Maybe if it's too many, I think is your point. Or, or is there even enough?
Would it be based on questioning a type of a commercial conditional zone? If there's your way to class. You know, for some sort of a residential, keep the two acres. Purple.
I think it ought to be two acres or more. Here.
Randy made it pretty clear, he's not budging on. Minutes lots for residential. And hindsight, I, I totally agree with him because he's right. Our intent is the one thing, the future interpretation of it. Oh, but. He's absolutely right. He's probably. Glad Mr. Jackson's out.
I have your answer on the lot sizes. So for mixed, so again, residential detached, single family across whole town, all zoning dis- districts, thirty thousand square feet. But for commercial or industrial, mixed use has none. No minimum lot size, light industrial is one acre. General business has none, but you can only cover fifty percent of your land area with buildings. Neighborhood commercial, it's thirty thousand square feet for commercial.
Quite a bit in there that have none.
General business and mixed use have none, and obviously mixed use is three quarters of our jurisdiction.
If you guys, can you throw that up on a map so they can see the MRMU?
Yeah.
I think if that's color. Mark, you guys will see that's a big geography. But, but the next question is, are there even a bunch of parcels out there?
Upway subdivide parcel, get all parcel.
Then it's a qualifier to even apply. Yeah, we're not talking about reducing the lot size. The amount of qualifier to even apply. MRMU is huge. As a percentage.
So this is the, the zoning map of the town. So yeah, brown is mixed use.
It's seventy-five percent.
That's been my estimation.
Roughly. But right now, today there aren't, I'm going to guess, just use the two eighty corridor. But there aren't a tremendous amount of parcels under two acres.
On two eighty?
Yeah, I just look, I'll just say two.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we know what a bunch of that is.
So another, another thing I'll just show you, uh, while we have this up, and this goes back to the future land use map. See that part away. So when we first went through this process, uh, about a year and a half ago. Uh. Mr. Cobb and I put together a couple maps. That basically showed, there we go. The parcel sizes in Mills River, so forgive me for operating this from here, but. So in the whole town of Mills River, every parcel, and again, this is using the old standards we looked at originally, three acres or more is highlighted in pink. Five acres or more. Is the dark red. And then ten acres or more. You can see it gets less and less is the dark purple. But again, we were looking at that before when conditional zoning was not going to be based on the future land use map districts, which is what we have here now. So again, only these targeted areas. That are red, light blue, or purple. Will be able to qualify for a conditional zoning regardless of minimum parcel size. Now, my map is not as good, but I did a rough exercise today. And basically circled in Sharpie. Um. Areas that have parcels, two acres or more, and this is a rough estimation. So I may actually need to zoom in on this.
That are also in those areas.
That are just in those districts.
It's everything.
Oops.
Just to clarify, I'm not saying it's wrong, but we're tightening it up. With each of these little things. Each of these things is tightened up.
Yeah, let me just go to this.
Want to make sure everyone's looking at what I've been doing.
Alright, that'll be better.
Special permit or rezone.
There we go. So again, just me with a Sharpie on paper, but.
Thanks for doing it.
Every, every parcel. In one of these outlined areas in black is larger than two acres approximately.
And in the, the district.
Yeah, and in those districts. So light industrial is pretty much, much fully covered. I put Xs on some of the ones that are, are too small and do not qualify. So you can see around Butler Bridge Road here, most of the stuff on the east side of Boylston Highway uh is large enough, but there's a couple. Uh, residential parcels that are uh smaller lot sizes that would not meet the two acre minimum. Um, you can see around, again, most of our major commercial intersections. I'd say you've got about half of them, but you're def- it's the bigger ones that are um the most visible. There's quite a large chunk in the center of town here, and then as you go down Boylston Highway, it's kind of a, a fifty fifty mix. This is around Ray Hill in Boylston. Um, so again, a lot of the smaller residential properties on the east. Uh, side of this area um are below two acres. And then it's kind of similar. This is near, uh, I think Gash Road, Forge Mountain. Um, you've got a couple that. Are two, are too smaller below the two acre requirement, and then the larger parcels um that would qualify. So again, just to give you a general idea that if we went with two acres for a minimum. Parcel qualification size for this process, these are the areas that would be eligible.
But again, go back up to something. Where you got the smaller parcel with the Xs on it.
Mm-hmm.
They could cooperate with to change the parcel.
Correct. So it. So I guess I should uh qualify that. It wouldn't be minimum parcel size or at minimum acreage, I guess is a better way to say it.
For that.
For, for, yeah, the district that's coming in to apply. So if they, yeah, so could Mr. Foster's point, if someone bought one of these big properties and then a couple of the small ones around it. Um, either them as the new owner or the owner of the large parcel and the surrounding owners would all need. To basically sign off that we are all applying for this conditional just like.
The properties outside. They're not eligible. But it could be that position.
It was, it was something I suggested as well. I think there was some concern about uh the scope of this.
Wrong.
Tool across our twenty-three square mile jurisdiction. So the only way to legally. Geographically limit it is through the future land use map.
Red line something where you want it.
You could, I mean, you could do it by zoning district too. Um. But again, you know, we have light industrial on Schoolhouse Road. I mean, again, some of those areas are still here, but I think this targets, I mean, again, that's the name, the, the community center and those commercial. Corridor areas.
Or. They. Turns out that the workload's not that bad. If there's interest in other areas, it's fine.
So with Jeff, uh. With Jeff Young that asked the question. I don't think we're being facetious about it. I think you get to ask it as a thinking question. You and I, Jeff, let's say. I think the question we have, Joe, directed the law, would. Eliminate the minimum lot size, but nullify this. Question may ask something for that. Nullify the need for.
Are you talking about minimum lot size or minimum acreage to qualify?
Size or. Not for, not for a. Edition. Right, let me, let me ask, what, what exactly did Randy? You can anyone clarify that?
I did not. That was a month ago.
My understanding was, um. Don't want. Extensity such as. All of the time, the time used to. For ten thousand square feet. We, we know what, we know what that heavy condensed, we want. The ends, yeah, for eight or four acres.
So it wasn't so much the application qualifier as it was that, the end. And then Jeff. Young asked the question. If we take that away, which I think we all agree is a huge tool, a developer would love to have that conversation with us. I think they would be tripping over themselves to have that conversation outside of a quasi judicial environment where. They would love that to reduce, and Randy's absolutely right, but then Jeff said, are we nullifying the need for this? If we, if we get rid of that. I guess my question there is. What, what are some good examples of, of, of requests that would be? Is it okay for us to, what would those be? We.
That's hard to answer. I mean, I, again, I, I think the most plausible we'll see is a mix of uses. Right now, our zoning code. Allows either commercial. Or residential, not both. Um.
Beyond just home-based businesses.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about, you know, single family homes. I'm talking about maybe a two or three story building with multifamily with retail on the bottom. Many, think of a mini Biltmore Park, but on five acres.
Sure.
Just one example.
Does anyone else have any thoughts of who's going to apply and what they're going to ask for here? And I think. Maybe answering that question, at least getting ideas of what would be asked, requested by these, these advocates.
That's what Randy, yeah, his dens- density was the biggest issue. Um. Is what his issue was not, uh. Beyond that, just didn't want to increase it up. Didn't want to leave that as something negotiable basically.
Well, you mentioned heights, that could be a situation then if they were like off an embankment, might would ask for conditional.
And I'll, I'll just say, building height was brought up in the council public hearing as something they thought of taking off as a negotiating tool, and they chose to let, leave it on. Um, but you're correct, the, the direction I got from them. Was again, if we have a multifamily developer come in, right now they're allowed four units an acre. With conditional zoning, again, the way it was written before. With density being on the table. There could be a negotiating tool for them to go up to six units an acre in exchange for something the town wants. Open space trails could be anything. But that, that was the specific deck direction we received to remove that. And just four units an acre for multifamily, and then one dwelling unit per thirty thousand square feet for detached, single family. But no, Randy's other point was. Maintaining, you know, our rural character and larger lot sizes. And so again, that's where uh. The ordinance basically talks about single family developments, maintaining thirty thousand square feet, those special cluster developments being twenty thousand square feet. And then uh multifamily, and there's a couple other development types are just exempted from that, because if you're building townhomes, your lots are your walls. And that's what is happening with the townhome development of Jepris.
So if we went with uh individual, we went with two acres, an individual wouldn't have to worry about it. Under two acres, say they were build a individual home on an acre and a half, they wouldn't. Fall into asking for.
No, because they, again, we, we get calls all the time, you know, I have, I have this much land, how many houses can I build? And I just take the acreage divided by point six nine, and whatever that number is, that's the number of houses they can build per our townwide residential density.
They just fall it under standard zone.
Standard by right zoning.
Okay.
With the warehouse. Did this um, but what retro that went through the traditional zone, rezone. Had it been under conditional zone, we could have limited the use and put it in. Again, we have to look at any use that would be under that type zoning in the future. So we couldn't guarantee, we couldn't ask the uh, the requesting party. So we're going to have to, to promise this is all it's ever going to be. We can't.
But I, this, it to me is, we can specify. Use and it stays with the property.
Yes, if, 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 if that's something, obviously the applicant is open to negotiating on, and if it's part of their request.
Negotiating to.
Of course, yeah. But yeah, doing that as part of a regular rezoning is, is contract zoning, which is illegal.
Yeah.
Conditional zoning, we could even specify one particular use.
And that's the new district.
And that's the new district.
Yeah.
One particular use.
Say you want to build a restaurant, okay, we want it to remain a restaurant. Not. Load a house, nigga.
Right. Other than that, it's. It could change.
Yeah.
Anything on that list becomes used by right.
Mm-hmm.
What I always thought of as conditional zoning is being a tool.
Yeah.
Maintaining the rural. Atmosphere and density.
Yeah.
We put the board. Going to want to make sure we're keeping. That here, we're here.
And that's, I mean, one of the primary goals of the conference of plans, so, yeah.
Questions, suggestions on it? I think the two acres makes more sense when I put in the maintenance and rural atmosphere into that.
Uh, one more quick, have you compared it with other districts that are we comparable with like a two acre minimum to others that? Did you look at anything like the model by? Which is just a.
Oh, you mean what other ordinances use?
Yeah.
Oh, it's been a while since I've looked at them. Um. I'd honestly, I'd have to go back and double check. When we first drafted the original text. We looked at Hendersonville, Brevard, the county, and Asheville, um, all as examples. So if, if we had factored that into the uh minimum requirements, it would have been back then, but I, I just don't remember to be honest. Thanks.
So if you got a property listed two acres. And you want some commercial, after the rezone process, have it change the performance and do whatever you think. But that's necessarily less than two acres just means can't do the conditional zoning process. It would have to be a prudent rezon. For something else.
And I'll, I'll just say too, I mean, if we did ever want to open it up more later, I think the lowest I would be comfortable with is about an acre, because again. You know, there's stormwater requirements all over town, there's watershed requirements that we administer. It's in a large part of the town, and you know, without enough sufficient land area, obviously it depends what you're building. Um, there's just more constrictions on, on what you can really do on a parcel like that size. Um there's just more constrictions on, on what you can really do on a parcel like that size.
It always loosens it up if there's minimal application process. Are we helping with making a motion tonight, or do we want to talk about it somewhere else? Michael, have we hit your, your highlights here? Your changes, additions, and suggestions?
So what I've heard, and again, if a board member feels differently, is that there's a consensus for the minimum, and I can change this to acreage instead of lot size, that I do think that's confusing. You can uh get them mixed up um for two acres. And then I get, uh the rest of the stuff that I removed was at the direction of council, so.
Yeah, the larger section you added was a bottom five, top of six, starting at line ninety-eight.
Yeah, and I believe we touched on all that, because again. Yeah, the, those, those standards come from what's in the zoning code now through special use permits. So just to keep the record clean, I did include a new statement of consistency. Again, just because the planning board's doing a review and recommendation as well. So again, if you wanted to recommend for approval, you can do the recommendation for approval and adopting the statement of consistency in one motion, or you can do it as two separately. And all you would need to say is, you know, recommend for approval and adopt the statement of consistency for TXT twenty-three oh one as written.
I'll make the motion. Make the approval and adopt the statement of consistency.
Was there a second?
I'll stick with that.
Orally approving of our major subpo. Works for me.
It works.
Yeah.
TXT twenty-one oh one as written.
Okay, so I'd like to ask for a vote, all in favor. In business.
Okay. I really want to make this real simple tonight. Uh I just, maybe we could get Marco or work us up a suggestion, but we need an ordinance to cover lighting of new developments, retroactive. These new type LED lights, they're designed uh not the, the old type, you know, that lit up the sky. And I realize that anyone that should come up with uh not applied to green housing. Comes up with a cultural exemption, I do believe. So that, that's just my thoughts on that, you know, if anybody else has some thoughts, I just think maybe you could come up with something that we could start with. To make sure that future on new development, whatever. Yeah, proper lighting. Personally, they don't need to be much more efficient. That's, that's just where I'm at on that.
And when I was at Asheville, um we Asheville owns a lot of district lots. They got a grant to convert from study of day for some of the study of day for LEDs. One of the concerns was the temperature. The higher temperature lights are more of a blueish light, lower temperature or the soft white. Um and I, I don't think we need to get into those details necessarily. In the traffic here, I like the higher temperature because the contrast is better. But in my office, uh down deep underground in an undisclosed location, also known as a basement. I use the soft white, the lower temperature light is much easier to light. So I can see the difference from both. I think the biggest thing is light pollution. That's rural character we have in the river. Uh where a person would have the opportunity throughout the yard and look at the stars. Some things you can't help. Some areas can be red, can be the place. But like Mr. Malochek was saying, the light paths, the old days where the lights surrounding the outside of the building was blasting out everywhere. Um those are not really good for the neighbors. And um I think that like Mr. Foster said, the lights that are coming out nowadays, it's really not going to be much of an impact to have these ordinance for most people because you call it Duke Energy, say, streetlight, right? An outdoor light on my property, they're going to bring one of these out that shines down, not like I can go up with right outside bedroom window, which rid of the whole property. I don't think it's going to be a big burden. Light will still be done. Uh is there a minimum lighting for parking lots? We don't, we don't require certain panel power per foot.
There's, there's nothing considering any type of lighting in the code anywhere.
Sure. I don't, I don't think we need to necessarily specify that. Build a, a business with a parking lot, minimum lighting standards, I don't think we that's, that's up to the property. As long as your light doesn't dog the property unreasonably.
No, I, I've suggested it since, ever since I've been here, but again, and some people do it voluntarily and some just install what they want to install.
A good way, be a good neighbor for a developer, it's the support of a building facility. A way right now currently to be a good neighbor could be finding with the light. My thoughts about the ordinance would be used to contact.
Hi, I, thank you. I, I, I agree with everything you're saying and um the point that came to my mind when um Jim started speaking was the preservation of dark sky. You know, um Jim and Brian and I are all on the open land committee as well, and um it just got me to thinking how those things are kind of in parallel. Um where we're both trying to preserve open land here, but if we're not also, you know, it's kind of well, that's what we see during the day, but being able to have some sort of lighting restrictions that can help us preserve our night skies seems to make a lot of sense.
Agricultural uses or tip. Previous guy knew what you got here. So it's worth that. There, there's a lot of technology. You and O'Halloran, you know what there is? I live across the street from so that Jay. They're, they're going to have to.
There is technology.
It's there. I'm, I'm not saying you go backwards or.
No, I know. Right, in the future.
I'm, I'm not willing to give up the free house conversation. I know, it's not going to go well.
Well, it, it helps if they
Well, lakeside not inside the upper, breaking, well, lakeside. Except peanut or green house. That's not in the upper, you can all pass. Feel like quite tall. Get ready to be under contract, you really expect the life. But new construction, I don't know why we wouldn't have a conversation.
And I agree with Mr. Moore. I don't, I don't see it being as much of a concern with residential developments or subdivisions. I mean, something new you're seeing is most of our major subdivisions are installing streetlights. So there is additional light, but they are the Duke Energy fixtures that are full downcast LED lighting. Now, that doesn't mean there's not sunlight pollution, but it's mitigated, but it, it's really some of the commercial developments, and again, where you have non-fully downcast lighting, where you have light projecting out either um at a ninety-degree angle or, or more, and that's where light pollution can spread those surrounding properties. And there are um municipalities in the area that already do that, so there's, there's plenty of research and uh good places for us to start.
Lot lining flag out at night, you gotta have it lit somehow. Sometimes you get a lot of this in your car. I have one. I need to, I need to unchange the band. I think that would be a nice spread. And on the side of the flag. People like their signs. Uh there ought to be a way to not overdo it. Keep it within reason. I don't like signs that are lit where I can see the lights from the road. I think it's a car coming at it. Or it's lining and, you know, we had to shoot it out when I was at the highway department. Maybe that's something they need to, to warn us. That may be what
No, there's consensus from the board for that. I mean, you got, you all can just shake your heads yes, if you want. Okay, everyone's good with that. We'll, we'll look into that. Yeah, I'll, we'll. Well, like, like we did with conditional zoning, Kevin and I will do some research and, you know, we'll present a couple of different scenarios and come back to you with some options.
We'd say to this group, you have different pay staff. Yeah, well. And I've spoken with some friends over in Asheville, they're more than happy to questions and. Asheville calls it the dark sky workings. So I don't know. Maybe call it the darkest possible skyworks.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, get a better name.
Conditional items or board comments? Has anybody got anything that? Michael, the uh, the company, we don't know who it was, that pulled their permit. They had more adjustments at the last minute. They submit a correct permit.
They have not, but there has been a new application submitted. Different applicant. Same person. I really don't have a big update. Um we've basically just been taking our time in July to kind of stand up the watershed program now that we've got the ordinance adopted. And again, had a little time away from um some of our board meetings. Uh you'll see there's a new watershed page on the town website, um and then Kevin and I are working on developing some of the applications and then eventually hopefully get to establishing the inspection program. But again, the, the ordinance was just the first part. Now we got to actually build the administrative program up, so uh we've been spending a lot of time on that, fine tuning smart gov and uh just moving forward, so. Nothing major here, but yeah, happy to take any questions.
I'd just like to say thanks and what they'll be means a lot. Yeah, your patience. Thank you for what you do. Hey. Is anything promised? Anyone wants to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion with.
All right, in a second. All in favor? Thank you for being here. Welcome again. Thanks for coming. Thank you for coming.